Independent thoughts, independent life. This is Chad Benson.
Jacob Fry, we have a yes or no question for you. Yes or no, will you commit to defunding Minneapolis Police Department? We don't want no more police. Is that clear? We don't want people with guns toting around in our community, shooting us down. You have an answer? And it's a yes or a no. And it's a yes or a no. Will you defund the Minneapolis Police Department?
Yeah, yes or no, Jacob? Jacob Fry, of course, is the mayor of Minneapolis. And the walk of shame that he did, and he's in his mask, people are screaming at him. It was very, I saw a great article that says very Maoist, right? Like that, that kind of sense of, we are going to force you to answer this question. And to Jacob's credit, and by the way, if you've not seen Jacob Fry, in the progressive world, he is straight out of Central Casting. He is everything that Central Casting would say, what do you want? Oh, perfect. Here, we've got a perfect person for him. Out they roll. So will you or won't you defund the police?
Be quiet, y'all. It's important that we hear this because if y'all don't know, he's up for reelection next year. And if he says no, guess what we gonna do next year?
All right. Get the [bleep] out. Jacob, go home. Go home, Jacob, go home. Go home, Jacob, go home. Shame, 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 shame on Jacob.
Off he goes. Well, they had a meeting last night, Old Minnesota, and they decided, hey, you know what? Minneapolis, we got enough here. We could do what we want to do. We'll just get rid of this police department.
Here's the statement that was just released, saying, "Our system of policing is not keeping communities safe, and our efforts at incremental reform have failed." Now, the mayor wants to keep the police force intact, so it's unknown if and when this dismantling will happen.
They have enough votes to essentially override his veto. So Minneapolis is defunding the police department. And then what? I think it's very much a fair question. So what exactly, so you defund the police department, you get rid of the entire police department, that's what you want to do. If I'm right, I think the charter says that the sheriff cannot patrol in certain areas. So are you going to leave it to vigilantes, militia? Are you just not going to have police? And we're going to do an honor system? How exactly does that work? And if you're thinking you're going to let everybody go and then hire some back, who would want to work for you at this point in time? Who would want to work for? I get, you're upset, you're angry, you're pissed, you're, you, you want change. Absolutely. Zero problems with that. But have you thought this through? That's the question I want to, have you thought this through? I get, you're upset about what went on. You should be. You should be angry. But have you thought the whole thought process through?
It's not that we're dismantling a system that was working. We're dismantling a system that actually wasn't working very well for us, and seeing if we can design something better. And I believe we can.
That's great. But when I've seen everybody from the, that's been on television, in the world of the Minneapolis City Council, they don't really have anything about a system that's going to work better. I got no problems. If you wanted to fund the police and cut the police and just say, hey, we're throwing the baby out with the bathwater, we're going to start all over, we're going to have a new kid. All right, do your thing. But like everything else, people jump through emotions, two feet into something, not realizing, okay, we've got to have a plan. What is the plan that you're going to have? I'm curious. I think a lot of people are curious. What would that plan be? Because many big cities across this country, Los Angeles, Mayor Garcetti, $150 million, took away from the police department and budget. You're seeing this, let's get rid of the police, growing. And, okay, what's the step that you're going to take? Who has a real idea of what that actually looks like? I'm just curious. We're all curious. I love change. Change is a good thing. It can be tough at times. But I also realize, just like when people say, we should get rid of the Border Patrol. All right, so then what? We're going to have to have something. You can't have nothing. Like, that's not the option. So what are you, what's, what's the goal here? When this first started to really grow, and let's be 100% honest, this is bigger than anything in our lifetimes. I talked about Rodney King last week. Rodney King, while the world watched and LA was fighting and on fire, the reality was, it was there. Very little happened outside of there. The world watched. Freddie Gray, Eric Garner, Michael Brown. Little things happened in those areas because of what took place, and the world watched, and there was a few protests here and there. But nothing anywhere as close to this. Nothing anywhere as close to this. And you want change? I want change. I think we all do. I think police, across the board, would welcome a conversation and how we get to a place where everybody feels like, hey, we're on the same page. If you're looking perfection, you're never going to find it. I think we're looking and hoping that one day we're going to find perfection in, in everything. That's not going to happen. But you have to have the end game planned. What does that look like? Is it truly no police and the honor system? I don't think so. I think there's people out there that would love that, but the reality, that doesn't take place. If you've ever watched The Wire, watch what happens in The Wire. I lived in Europe. There are certain places that the police don't go. They don't. So what happens? Remains to be seen. But it was interesting to watch the whole thing take place, short of somebody saying him wearing a, you know, a sandwich board with his transgressions. It was creepy to watch. 323-538-2423. At Chad Benson Show is your Twitter. You can tweet at me, you can text the numbers. Last week, the economy, everybody got excited about the economy. Now, what I said about the economy is, real unemployment's most likely 16 to 17%. Everybody got super excited about said economy.
America is coming back. Three million new jobs, lower unemployment rate, furloughed, temporary layoffs, going back to work, green shoots popping up everywhere, stocks are soaring, POTUS policies are working. Stay with the winners, Trump and Pence and me. The best is yet to come.
God, I was super excited. Uh-oh, that's a mistake.
Workers, some workers, were recorded as employed but absent from work due to other reasons versus unemployed on temporary layoff. So counting certain heads differently did change the number, and we could look at the May number as high as 16.3%.
Yeah. I said, because here's the way unemployment works, right? It's always been a game. Every president gets to play this game. Which is, unemployment may be 6%, when really it's closer to probably 8 or 10%. Because you have people that are not working and no longer count in the system because their unemployment, they've exhausted the entire opportunity for their unemployment. So they no longer count in the system, which has always been kind of tricky. Here, it's a little bit different, because we've had such mass layoffs, some of them are furloughed, they're still technically going to have a job, but they're temporarily laid off. All of them play this game. This was a swing and a miss. Look, it wasn't as bad as people predicted, but the reality is, is the way that they've done this didn't add up. So instead of 13.3%, we're closer to 16%. That means we're probably closer to 18%. We're not near 25. We're closer to probably 18%, which is still an ugly look. But it's better than 25, which a lot of people thought potentially may happen. 323-538-2423. At Chad Benson Show is your Twitter. You can tweet at us, you can text the program as well. Hope you had a phenomenal weekend. Good God, it was beautiful here. I mean, it was gorgeous here. We've had 112, 113 degree temperatures last week, and then over the weekend, and through today and tomorrow, 90s, low 90s. In fact, I went outside this morning, and it was quite nippy in the air. I went outside, whoa! My shorts and t-shirts can feel the coolness in this air. Like it. Summertime, close to it. Coronavirus still here. New York's starting to reopen. It's very interesting to see what takes place, because we've had tens of thousands, probably millions, over the 13 or so days of protests that have gone on. So what does that look like? Because there's going to be a spike in the coronavirus. It's not gone anywhere. We've talked about it. The pandemic will probably become endemic, which means it's here. There's not going to be first and second waves, it probably won't be seasonal. The chances of this thing just kind of staying here and us learning to live with it is very real. And as states start to reopen, and we test more, you will see spikes in numbers. But that was pre-protest. What's that look like now? That's going to be interesting. 323-538-2423. At Chad Benson Show is your Twitter. Tweet at us. Happy Monday. AMAC, Association Mature American Citizens, fighting on your behalf for great things. Like, right now, one of the things that they're doing, which I think is incredible, is they're out there getting behind a bill that would help and, and force companies in some way, shape, or form, to incentivize them as well, to bring home things like pharmaceutical manufacturing, so we don't depend on countries like China for our drugs, which I think is smart. They're out there fighting for common sense immigration reform and many, many other things. Top of that, they give you great benefits, retail, restaurant, hotel discounts, so much more. It is a great organization, it's over 2 million people, over the age of 50 have joined. And right now, you can join for free today. It's on me. It's simple and easy. You go to amac.us/chad. That's A-M-A-C dot U-S forward slash Chad. It's one year, it's a free membership, it's on me, it's not going to cost you anything. Try it out for yourself. Grab the benefits and see the things they're doing for and fighting for you. Amac.us/chad. Chad Benson Show.
No fake outrage here, just the real thing. The Chad Benson Show.
We have looked at ways to reform this department. We do not believe it is possible. We have met resistance at every turn when we have attempted reforms. And what we need to do is to form a new public safety approach.
Yeah, and look, I'm totally up for that. I know there's this big want to throw everything away. Let's just defund the police, we'll, you know, we'll just, we'll move on, and, and we'll just roll from there and see what happens. That's not what we want. Let's be real. How do we bridge the gap between the defunding of police, which is insane, and the status quo, which in some departments isn't working? I'm not saying all departments. The sad thing about this is, is that every police officer now is bad, which we know is not true. That's not true. The majority, and by the majority, I don't mean 51%, I mean like 99% of them do a hell of a job. Are there issues? Of course. But how do we bridge the gap where the community is involved? And the police are still allowed to police without policing in such a way that they're afraid to do their job? Because we don't want that either. Right? We don't want to become Mogadishu. We don't want to become Lebanon, in, in the 80s. We don't want just people running around with, with, because what do you think the alternative is? Neighborhood watch becomes what? Becomes vigilante groups. Last thing we need are people running around vigilante style, protecting things that they think they should do. That's not what we want. Instead of trying to make things better, what you're going to do is make things worse. But the question is, how do we go from here to there in such a way that people are involved? And the police feel like they can do their job? Because at the end of the day, I go to work here, I get to talk into a microphone. You go to work wherever you, maybe you're a doctor, maybe you're a lawyer, maybe you're a CPA, maybe you're a mechanic, maybe you're a cook, maybe you're a stay-at-home parent. The end of the day, the chances of us confronting somebody, getting into a fistfight and/or having to pull our gun or somebody shoot at us is slim to none. So how do we give them the opportunity to police, knowing we have to change? Become more modern? The difference in our jobs is, in the way that they play their jobs, if you will, is they play for keeps. Right? They, they're playing for keeps, meaning their job has an inherent risk. Your job and I job, we don't have. That's just it. So how do we give them the power? And at the same time, understand that we need to keep them in check? And I think that's the question going forward. When you see a lot of, let's defund the police, let's take, a whole slowdown here. I get that you want to defund the police, but what takes place when you defund the police and you move them out, if that's your end game? And replace them with what? Because you have to have something on the back end. What does that look like? 323-538-2423. At Chad Benson Show is your Twitter. You can tweet at us, you can text the program as well. Love hearing from all of you. It's just, it's, because I had somebody over the weekend was texting me, telling me, you know, how bad I am, and that, the usual, like, people get mad, and, and I was trying to figure out why, like, what I had said that that would, would cause him to be so mad at me. You know, and his whole thought process in this was, well, you know, you're talking about people that are afraid to have a conversation and lose their jobs, and, you know, and I'm like, well, we shouldn't want that, right? We should want to be able to have a conversation, want to be able to move the conversation forward. Our whole goal should be finding solutions, not attacking one another. And he's like, I'm coming for you. We're all, and I'm just sitting there just laughing, and I'm just like, that's, that's not the helpful conversation we need to have in this country. If you're interested in solutions, let's find them. I'm 100% behind change and finding solutions. If you want retribution, that to me gets nowhere. Gets nobody anywhere. If you're in, if you want punishment over progress, what does that solve? 323-538-2423. At Chad Benson Show, Twitter. Tweet at me, text the program. Happy Monday, Chad Benson Show.
Independent thoughts, independent life. This is Chad Benson.
From the brutal police killing to the marches, to the 110,000 Americans dead from the coronavirus, to the tens of millions now unemployed, there's a growing sense that things are spinning beyond our grasp in this country. In fact, in our latest NBC News Wall Street Journal poll, fully 80% of all registered voters tell us that the country is out of control. Just 15% believe things are currently under control.
What does out of control mean? I'm just curious. Does it mean that like, we're done? It's like this, the world's coming to an end? Everything's bad, Chad. We got the coronavirus. We got the coronavirus, that's right. And so does everybody else, right? It's not like we're the only ones. We're dealing with it. Have we made mistakes along the way? Yes. Are we going to get through this? Absolutely. Does it suck? 100%. Fauci even came out over the weekend and said, look, China's got a lot of this that they need to have the blame put on, because they failed to inform not just us, but the world. George Floyd. Trump could have handled that better. Both of these, he could have handled better. Don't be surprised at the way he handles things. What did you think was going to happen? This guy's not that guy. That guy. So today Biden is going to meet in Houston with George Floyd's family. Trump's not that guy. He's not. He's not that guy. Biden is Biden. He's a politician. He comes across as very genuine. I think he's a genuine individual. But he's not that. Trump is a different guy. Trump is, here I come, straightforward, in your face, 24/7. Over the weekend, he tweeted 200 times on Friday. That's just Friday. Said 200 tweets and retweets. Think about that for a second. 200. Producer Phil was joking, he said, I don't think in the entire time I've had Twitter, have I tweeted 200 times? I've had Twitter since 2010, so 10 years. I've tweeted almost 10,000 times. It's not a lot. It's basically 1,000 a year. It's about three a day. He did 200 in a 24-hour period. It's eating him up. He's looking, he's realizing, these polls, well, he's getting his butt kicked. And it isn't looking good. It isn't. And if you look at the latest polls, taken from Axios, Ipsos poll, taken from CNN, taken from anywhere, he's losing big time.
Still, President Trump's approval rating stands pretty much where it's been for the last two years. 45% approve, 53% disapprove. Joe Biden's lead over President Trump is a very durable seven points, 49-42. And it's exactly where things stood in our poll two months ago. And now both candidates are challenged with facing a moment when an increasingly vocal public is demanding change and declaring that black lives matter.
How does he deal with this? What does he do? Because he's got people turning on him. Mattis, Kelly, well, they're angry, they're horrible, over the weekend, Colin Powell.
I'm very happy with what, what General Allen said, and all the other generals, admirals were saying, and diplomats are saying. We have a constitution, and we have to follow that constitution. And the president's drifted away from it. I'm so proud of what these generals and admirals have done and others have done. But you know, I made my point with respect to Trump's performance some four years ago, when he was running for office. And when I heard some of the things he was saying, it made it clear that I could not possibly vote for this individual.
Trump came out, hammered him, of course, said, well, you're the one who got us into the Iraq War. Fair shot across the bow. But it's interesting, because you're having more and more people. Bush and Romney said, nah, we're not going to do it. We're not going to, we don't want any part of this. We're not a part of you. We're moving on. Want something else. What's the else? See, at the end of the day, the Republicans who can't stand Trump are also faced with the fact that if you hand it over to Biden, his policies will go completely against any of the things that you believe in. Any of the things you fought for. It's going to raise taxes. By the way, it doesn't matter who's in charge, we may have to be raising taxes to pay for all this stuff that's happened because of COVID-19, so let's get that straight. Secondly, though, more regulation, more centralized federal government with more power and control. A lot of the stuff that you talk about, and let's be real, politicians talk a great game, but very rarely do they back that game up. It's what's the best for them, because it's about personal, keeping the power for yourself, party second, people third.
The first thing that troubled me is the whole birthed movement. And then I was deeply troubled by the way in which he was going around insulting everybody, insulting Gold Star Mothers, insulting John McCain, insulting immigrants, and I'm the son of immigrants, insulting anybody who dared to speak against him. And that is dangerous for our democracy, it's dangerous for our country. And I think what we're seeing now, those massive protest movement I have ever seen in my life, I think this suggests that the country is getting wise to this, and we're not going to put up with it anymore.
Yeah. Are they getting wise to it? Yes. But it's tough, because on the action side of things, not the words, not the tweets, but the action side of things, a lot of what he has done is checked, all the boxes the Republicans would like to check. A lot of what he has done is what he was sent there to do. So the tweeting, the anger, the fighting, the lying, a lot of that stuff, which is the drama, you take that out, and he has done a lot of the stuff that he was sent there to do. A lot of that, he's checked those boxes. Check that box. I did this, I did that. Religion, check. Right? Regulation, check. Taxes, check. Fighting immigration, check. Checking the boxes. But he's also done enough that he's turned people off. And that I do get. That I get. After a while, no matter how much you like what somebody does, eventually the drama becomes too much.
I'm very close to Joe Biden on a social matter and on a political matter. I've worked with him for 35, 40 years, and he is now the candidate, and I will be voting for him.
Colin Powell there. It's not been a great week. Last week, you could, you could, you could argue, I don't even think you have to argue. That was Trump's worst week last week. From the protests, to the Bible incident, to several other things that, that went down, that was arguably not his, that was probably his worst week. Friday, they come out with job numbers, you're like, ha-ha, they only find out those job numbers were kind of a mess, didn't tell the truth. And now you've got people coming out and saying, hey, we're going to move on from you. People that were once in your cabinet? And I sit there and I say, and I'm just being honest here. If everybody that you've worked with in the past, minus one or two, come out and say that you're an awful person, or, you know, just for whatever reason, at some point in time, do you think maybe it's you? Do you think maybe it's you? Or is everybody lying? People who love Trump, they'll say everybody's lying. This is what they want. They want Trump. Trump is the voice that they want. He goes there, he fights, he pushes back. That I do get. The Republicans, a lot of times, took a bunch of crap, they weren't great at fighting. But it's also, after a while, you spend your entire day trying to defend things that even supporters get frustrated with. 323-538-2423. At Chad Benson Show is your Twitter. You can tweet at us, you can text the program as well. All that being said, lots of stuff happened last week. Of course, Drew Brees came out and talked about the flag, and then that went south, and then everybody got mad at him. He came out and apologized, still apologized, his wife apologized for him yesterday. Then on Friday, Roger Goodell came out and changed his tune.
We, the National Football League, condemn racism and the systematic oppression of black people. We, the National Football League, admit we were wrong for not listening to NFL players earlier, and encourage all to speak out and peacefully protest.
Translation, there's going to be a lot of protesting this NFL season. There's going to be a ton of protesting this NFL season. In an, in an era right now, too, where we're going through the COVID era, which is, there is no fans if there's going to be games. NBA looks like they're going to start back up, probably in the next four to six weeks. NHL, they put out a plan first, but they're nowhere to be seen. Major League Baseball's tripping over themselves to find out who they can blame on why they're not going to play any of the season. Soccer around Europe is returning, starting tomorrow in Spain, but it's been going for the last two, three weeks in Germany. And the, the Premier League kicks back off, I think it's next week. So you've got all of this stuff happening, and the NFL's still trying to figure out what it's going to do. And then you, you, you have what's going on with George Floyd, and then of course, Colin Kaepernick. And was he blackballed? Wasn't he blackballed? I'm, I, look, I've always said, I always thought Colin was blackballed. Now, I think some teams took a real hard look at him, but thought, he, I don't want my backup quarterback to be the person that everybody focuses on 24/7, which will cause a rift inside of the locker room, because I've got 53 guys, I have to make sure we're all on the same page. But I think other teams passed on him because of the politics. Well, the politics has grown stronger. Athletes across the globe are speaking out. By the way, ath, and what I mean athletes, this weekend, the German, the Bundesliga, there were George Floyd taking knee protests in the German Bundesliga. Let's be honest about Germany. Not known for their inclusiveness. And I think Roger Goodell's looking around, saying, we got to get ahead of this.
We, the National Football League, believe black lives matter. I personally protest with you and want to be part of the much-needed change in this country. Without black players, there would be no National Football League. And the protests around the country are emblematic of the centuries of silence, inequality, and oppression of black players, coaches. and oppression of black players, coaches, fans, and staff.
Yeah. They're going to be on the forefront of it. Colin Kaepernick started something, whether you like him or not. I've, I, the way I've always looked at the Kaepernick thing is he's got a right to protest. That's the beauty of our country. Absolutely has a right. I think at times he switched up some of the things he was talking about, which kind of, which kind of blurred the lines of, well, you're, okay, this week you do this, the next week, and I think that happened on, on more than a few occasions. But I also realize it's a business. And the business said, no, let's not do that. You continue to do that. It's a business. Now the business has to deal with the repercussions of what's going on out there now. So we'll see what happens. But this isn't going anywhere anytime soon. And like I said, with these George Floyd protests and what's taking place, there is change afoot in this country. Change can be good, but it can be uncomfortable. And I think for a while it's going to be uncomfortable. But I think at the end of it, where we're headed is a good direction. And the NFL is looking and saying, all right, we made a mistake. And there was talk this weekend that, hey, could, could Kaepernick be back in the NFL? Could he be a backup to Tom Brady? That would be really interesting. 323-538-2423, @ChadBensonShow is your Twitter. Tweet at me, text the program as well, your love, your hate. It's funny, I get love and hate from both sides. That's when I know, okay, I'm touching some nerves and I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that. I just want to have a conversation. And if you insult to start the conversation, that's not a good way to start a conversation. Are you tired of credit card bills with high interest rates? Of course you are. How about this? Let's start saving some money. Get a credit card consolidation loan from Lightstream. You can save thousands in interest and get your rate as low as 5.95% APR with auto pay and excellent credit, lower than the average credit card interest rate, which is 19%. It's fixed. So the 5.95% APR is fixed, you don't have to worry about it wibble wobbling. Plus no fees whatsoever. And the application is easy and simple. It's 100% online. If you apply early enough, you can even get the money as early as the same day you apply. Plus, I'm going to do something else for you. When you go to lightstream.com/Benson, that's L-I-G-H-T-S-T-R-E-M.com/Benson, you're going to get even a better deal on that interest rate. So you'd be saving even more money. Subject to credit approval rate includes 0.5% auto pay discount. Terms and conditions apply, offer subject to change. Without notice, visit lightstream.com/Benson for more information.
You go, boy.
This isn't about right or left. This is just about right and wrong.
Right you are, Chad. The Chad Benson Show.
If we think it's bad right now, it has the ability to get a whole lot worse, which really incentivizes baseball and its players to get together, figure out a perfectly mutually agreeable solution. As somebody put it to me earlier this week, both sides are not going to be happy with that deal. And most important, get back on the field for themselves and for the fans.
Yeah. Jeff Pass in there, ESPN. I don't know if baseball's going to do it. I don't. They're, they're fighting hard, big time. And the question remains, do, do they want to? They don't want a prorated salary. They want the salary. What's your salary? I want the salary. I want the whole thing. Yeah, but you're only going to play 100 games or 75. No, no, I want the whole thing. I want the whole thing. The battle is there and the owners have most of the leverage, but not all of it.
Per their March 26th agreement, Major League Baseball has the ability to institute a schedule of its liking. Now, the problem with doing this is it would be against the players' objections. And the players hold a couple of cards still. They have the ability to say yes or no to expanded playoffs. They have the ability to say yes or no to miking up players during games. And both of those are important things and valuable things.
Yeah, they are. But at the end of the day, baseball's got a chance here to do the right thing. And I don't think they're doing it. And it's not just now. I'm looking forward, if you like baseball, next year, there is a chance there was already going to be a work stoppage. If you go with no games this year, straight into a work stoppage next year, you can kiss your butt goodbye.
The doomsday scenario where Major League Baseball owners say the players here are being completely intractable, we're just going to cancel the season. That would be a power play. And while I still think at this point, that is the least likely of the options, I don't think we can discount it considering all of the things, all of the animus, all of the fighting, all of the issues that have gone on here.
Yeah. But it shows you a lot of what baseball's all about. It's a regional sport. It's not our pastime anymore. Our new religion and has been for the last decade and a half, two decades is the NFL. NBA is second. Baseball is a far third. And then bringing up the rear is Major League Soccer and the NHL. But all of them are trying to do what they can to come back or to start on time. And they're starting with the games, they're not starting with money. Major League Baseball and their players started with money. Everything else is irrelevant. 323-538-2423, @ChadBensonShow, your Twitter, you can tweet at us. I was, over the weekend, I started watching Space Force with Corral and Malkovich. It was awesome. I've only through, I think the first four episodes, but it is just amazing. You have a chance, check it out on Netflix, Chad Benson Show.
Independent thoughts, independent life. This is Chad Benson.
Here's the statement that was just released saying, our system of policing is not keeping communities safe and our efforts at incremental reform have failed. Now, the mayor wants to keep the police force intact, so it's unknown if and when this dismantling will happen.
Dismantling of the police? How does that work? What does that even look like? They voted on it yesterday. Minneapolis City Council voted. They're going to dismantle the police. At least that's the thought process. That's what they voted on. Their mayor, Jacob Frye, was put on the spot in his walk of shame. He walked through protesters, hung his head real low, and they wanted to ask him one question.
Jacob Frye, we have a yes or no question for you. Yes or no, will you commit to defunding Minneapolis Police Department? We don't want no more police. Is that clear? We don't want people with guns toting around in our community, shooting us down. You have an answer? It is a yes or a no. It is a yes or a no. Will you defund the Minneapolis Police Department?
It is a yes or no. They don't want any more cops. They're done, they're over it. They want nobody with guns walking around the streets. Yes or no answer? Now, if you don't know anything about Jacob Frye, he's about as allied as you can get to the progressive cause, okay? We're talking about a guy who's very much left of center. Right? Like he's a member of the Minnesota Democrat Farmer Labor Party. Super left of center. Very progressive. But the reality is, is he progressive enough? Is he progressive enough in this situation for them? They asked him straight up, yes or no? Will you banish? Will you get rid of? Will you defund and eliminate the police department in Minneapolis? And to his credit, he was at least honest.
Be quiet, y'all. It's important that we hear this because if y'all don't know, he's up for reelection next year. And if he says no, guess what we gonna do next year?
All right. Get the [BLEEP] out. Jacob, go home. Go home, Jacob, go home. Go home, Jacob, go home. Shame, 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 shame.
Felt very Mao-esque watching that. Shame, 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 shame. Put his head down, did his walk of shame. He said, no, that's, I do not support the abolition of our police department. That's insane. That's insane. What are you thinking? That we're going to just take apart the police department? I'm, I'm curious, right? Like, I'm not trying to, we need to rethink policing in this country. We need to have a bridge between people of color who've seen the police department and the system fail them on numerous occasions. But the answer isn't getting rid of it. Because that's just, I, I find that to be completely absurd. What happens then? Isn't that a fair question?
Think about the consequences. You want to abolish police departments? Are you kidding me? What happens if you do that? Everybody goes out and arms themselves. They start hiring vigilante groups to protect them. We have total chaos going on. You know, that makes absolutely no sense.
Ben Carson right there. That doesn't make any sense. And I'm all for the change of having the conversation of how we go about from point A to point B, starting to move a conversation forward, to find a solution that works for everybody, for the police who are out there risking their lives and 99% of them do a hell of a job. You're asking for perfection. That's the other thing. We're asking human beings to make split second decisions and we want perfection. There's also some people out there that should never be police. And they all too often get through. Who'd want to be a cop nowadays? Why would you want to be a police officer? Why? I, I'm, I'm, I think it's a fair question. I talked to several of them over the last two weeks who are in here. I was telling producer Anthony before the show, on a daily basis, there's probably anywhere between, you know, at least one or two cops, up to maybe 10 or 15 that come through the office and studios on a daily basis. And if they had to do it over again, and they started today, they're like, I wouldn't do it. It's a tough enough job. And the people that are bad, who are cops, make it even worse for cops who are trying to do the right thing. But when you're on the streets now, they're asking you to make a social and political decision along with a law enforcement decision. So how do we do that? Retraining is one thing, but abolishing? That's, that's insane.
What's the rest of that story in Buffalo? I mean, isn't it the case that 57 officers quit the unit that they were part of? So we do have a problem. We need to create an environment where officers who want to live up to their pledge and the badge and to live up to the training that they received can do that. How we do things is go along, get along, don't tell if you see misconduct. We've got to change that culture. And that culture is contributing to the crisis we see unfolding all across our country right now.
Keith Ellison right there, Attorney General of Minnesota. He's right. We need the police to be able to police themselves. We need police to be able to not be afraid to come in. And I, because I think every one of us has asked the question in our own minds over the last two weeks, since that horrific day with George Floyd and what we saw on camera. If I was one of those other officers, would I have done something? And probably every one of us would have said, hell yeah, I would have done something. In saying that, why didn't they? Because there is a certain code that goes with it and it's breaking down that code. It's breaking down that code so they can feel comfortable enough to police themselves. But how do we get from point A to point B? When it comes to what's the step? Because the step that everybody's taking is, let's just change everything right now. We'll just get rid of police altogether. And replace them with what? Because Minneapolis is serious about this, but they have nothing behind it. So if you've got nothing behind it, you've got no real plan, you've just got a solution to, to, to keep the people out there happy at this moment in time, but with no real plan behind it. And then in six months, if you did get rid of them and policing dropped tremendously and crime went through the roof, you'd say, uh-oh, what do we do now? What's the true plan that you have? Because if you're going to take a measure that's drastic, it should be the full drastic measure, not the partial one. You want to jump out of an airplane, great. That's what you really want to do, but make sure you have a parachute. 323-538-2423, @ChadBensonShow, your Twitter, you can tweet at us, you can text the program as well. Biden's opening a massive lead pretty much all over the country on Trump. Today, he's going to be in Houston, meeting with George Floyd's family. And he is, let's be real, right now, he is in a situation where less is more. And it's his to lose.
Time for us to face the deep, open wound of systemic racism in the nation. Nothing about this is going to be easy or comfortable. But if we simply allow this wound to scab over once more without treating the underlying injury, we'll never truly heal. Except from the beginning, the very soul of this nation is at stake. That's why I'm running for president and why I stand united with every single Democrat behind our mission to beat Donald Trump and restore real leadership to the White House.
He's right about having the conversation. And I've said about the conversation that we need to have in this country is you can't be offended. You can't make it personal. And it doesn't matter if it's race or politics or sports or any, we, we've now become identity is everything. So if you voted for Trump and somebody says, I can't stand Trump, what, what you're saying in your mind is you don't like me. On the other side of it, if you voted for Trump and you heard somebody can't stand Trump, what you're saying is that person hates me, so therefore I should hate him. It's silly. Stop making it personal. There's going to be some stuff that's going to make us uncomfortable. But conversations are where we need to go. Not accusations, not punishment, but true life conversations where we sit down and we listen and we don't react. But I don't think we as a nation, at this moment in time, we may not be capable of that. We, you could put a piece of pizza out there and 10 people could take a bite, you're going to get 10 different answers and everybody's going to take it personal that it's a, and sort of front on them if they don't agree with what you said. Let alone something as critical and as serious as race. That's a tough thing to do. 323-538-2423, @ChadBensonShow, Twitter, tweet at me, text the program. Love hearing from every single one of you. Somebody says, why didn't you text me back? I text him back, I said, I try to text everybody. I try to get back to everybody. I get a lot of tweets, I get a lot of texts, even when I'm not on. So I do the best I can, so bear with me. Boomer Naturals, face covering world, that's what we're living in, masks are here, they're not going anywhere. I see all these companies now, they're throwing masks out there and I just laugh because none of them, all of them are trying to make a quick flip flop. You know, hey, we're, we're such and such a company. And it's just a bunch of baloney. Boomer Naturals has been around for a long time. And here's the thing, they've got a 30-day, 30-use face covering that's been used all over the world. 92% effective. It's got nano silver technology, three layers of hypoallergenic cotton and polyester, as well as it's been treated with antibacterial, antiviral protection that lasts on the cloth for 30 days. What does that mean? You take the Boomer Naturals face covering, the mask, you wash it in warm water and soap, you let it air dry, use it again and again and again for 30 days. Suitable for all day wear, covers the nose and the mouth. It's very comfortable because there's two sizes. There's children's sizes and there's adult sizes. It's not the one size fits all, which as we all know, doesn't fit anyone. And it's super inexpensive, less than 30 cents a day. How do you get these? You go to boomer naturals.com. When you do, use code Chad20. You're going to save 20% plus get free shipping on, on all orders over $50. That's code Chad20 at boomer naturals.com, boomer naturals.com, code Chad20, boomer naturals.com, code Chad20, Chad Benson Show.
Experiencing separation anxiety? That's dumb. Check out Chad 24/7 at his website, ChadBensonShow.com. And on iTunes, 3. The Chad Benson Show. Never feel lonely again.
Five, four, three, two, one, zero, ignition, liftoff.
Now it's time to find out.
What's trending?
What's trending?
Yeah, what does that mean?
I mean, something, right? Like, it's trending on the old internet.
What's trending?
Lot of stuff, baby, for the weekend. Dems with their moment of silence. If you've not seen it, they're like, all the Dems have a moment of silence. And watching some of them try to, they're on their knee, and like, Nadler's not, because Nadler's had a lot of issues. I don't expect him to be, but some of the other ones are trying to, and they're like, trying not to fall over. And I was watching AOC, and she's like, oh, the camera's on me, I better look really upset. She's very savvy, very savvy. Ben Carson trending. Says he reserves judgment on Trump's remarks. Minneapolis mayor. Very much trending. We've not seen the mayor. He's, uh, he's had some issues, for sure. And now with the defunding of the police, Jacob Frye is front and center. Greg Glassman, Reebok cuts ties over CrossFit CEO over a racism tweet. He said it was a mistake, but it wasn't racism. But it's not for you to decide. You don't get to decide that anymore. Several other organizations have cut ties with him. Colin Powell still trending, endorsing Joe Biden. And Bruce Lee. The mystery of Bruce continues. And his death on the eve of what would be his breakout movie. It's very interesting. Reading some great articles about Bruce yesterday, and what he would have been like in today's world. In particular, if he would have come up through today's world and he was, or he just magically reappeared, and there was time for him to get in the UFC, would he be any good? So, very interesting. Head on over to Twitter, and it's the usual. Anthony Bourdain, it's been two years since his passing. World Oceans Day is today. Trump 41%. He's getting handed his lunch right now, if you will, in the world of politics. He's getting handed his lunch. Also, 80% of Americans believe America is on fire, that it's going in the wrong directions, and that it's a mess. And Forrest Fenn, if you don't know who Forrest Fenn is, we're gonna talk about him in a little bit, but he did something, and over the weekend, somebody found that something he did. And low and behold, mystery is solved. Also trending today, Kurt Thomas, gymnast, who won gold in 78? The world championships, Pan American Games, represented the US. But also, as we were joking, was also in the movie Jim Corder. Arguably the worst, greatest movie of all time. Would you say that, Producer Phil, worst, greatest movie of all time?
That is a good assumption, yes.
Yeah, yeah. If you've never seen Jim Corder, imagine ninjas, but they also do gymnastics. Literally gymnastics. The Special Intelligence Agency. See, what he was part of in the movie Jim Corder. And it was so bad, it was amazing. If you've never seen it, it is worse. Just amazing, just incredible. 323-538-2423, @ChadBensonShow is your Twitter. Tweet at us. Chad Benson Show.
The Chad Benson Show.
Independent thoughts, independent life. This is Chad Benson.
This was a lot of hard work. Everyone who stayed home, everyone who socially distanced, everyone who put on those face coverings. You got us to this day. And it's a day to celebrate hundreds of thousands, New Yorkers coming back to work today, just the beginning of the restart.
Phase one in New York, we forgot, with all of this stuff going on, uh, out there. The protests, the unrest, the conversation that's being had about race in this country, that before that, the last, I don't know, 90 days before this, we have been looking at the coronavirus. What's going on with the coronavirus? And there's some concern about, we're starting to see spikes in places, California, Arizona, have seen spikes. But we, as they've opened up, I think we've kind of expected that we were going to get some spikes. New Zealand's down to zero. They had one pesky case left, now they're down to zero. Much easier to do. Right? It's much easier to do when you're New Zealand. They cut everybody off. Nobody could come or go, basically, for New Zealand. And it was, that's the way they did it. We're, we're not that. That's not who we are as a country. So, New Zealand got down to zero, but the reality is, is we still have this here. New York's getting ready to open up today, but over the last several days, we've had massive protests that no matter how hard you say, oh, this, we're gonna do this the right way, the reality is, if you're worried about somebody going into a shop, how can you not be worried about 20, 30, 40,000 people gathering somewhere to protest?
The death toll in the US now climbing past 110,000. And concerns growing about the spread of COVID-19 as hundreds of thousands march against police brutality. Kansas officials now warning a protester who marched there Friday and didn't wear a mask has tested positive.
So, and the way you look at something like that is, this person, because not everybody, they're saying that 80% of the spread, there's an 80/20 rule, if you guys don't know what that is, it's, apparently works with this, too, that everybody listening, if you have salespeople in your office, there's a good chance that 80% of your sales is done by 20% of the people. Well, they're saying that 80% of the spread is done by 20% of the people. The other 80% do the other 20% of the spreading. There's a good amount of people that have this, that they will not spread. But it's still here. It's still something needs to be dealt with. And as they start to open up in places like New York, what happens from here on out when it comes to the coronavirus, the protest? Is there going to be a situation where the spikes are massive and we have to shut down again? Uh-oh. What's that look like? 323-538-2423, @ChadBensonShow is your Twitter. You could tweet at me. And the reason I say that is because last week, on Friday, everybody's excited about the numbers that came out.
America is coming back. Three million new jobs, lower unemployment rate, furloughed, temporary layoffs, going back to work, green shoots popping up everywhere, stocks are soaring, POTUS policies are working. Stay with the winners, Trump and Pence and me. The best is yet to come.
Ludlow right there, very excited about this. Works obviously with Trump. But, hold on a second. Those numbers weren't all that they seemed. Apparently, there was an accounting error.
Workers, some workers, were recorded as employed but absent from work due to other reasons versus unemployed on temporary layoff. So counting certain heads differently did change the number. And we could look at the May number as high as 16.3%.
So it's not 13.3, it's probably more in the range of 16, it's not 25. The reality is, is probably somewhere in the range of I want to say 18%? 17, 18%? Cause they've always played the game with unemployment. For those of you guys who know how unemployment works, let's say you apply for unemployment, and you get it, and then you exhaust all of your unemployment, but you still haven't found a job. You no longer count. Once you go off the unemployment records, you no longer count. You don't count. So you're still unemployed, you're just not in the game. And you don't count against the numbers. Not 25%, probably closer to 17, 18%. So, not great, not as good as they thought. And saying that, not as bad as some people predicted. Usually it's where? Somewhere in the middle. 323-538-2423, @ChadBensonShow is your Twitter. You could tweet at us. He put it out there in a poem. It was a treasure chest, and lo and behold, it's been found.
In 2010, this man, Forrest Fenn, hid a chest filled with gold and rare artifacts somewhere in the Rocky Mountains. The search for this million-dollar treasure has obsessed thousands of seekers worldwide. And the trail starts with this poem, which Fenn wrote. It contains nine clues that point to the treasure's location.
As I have gone alone in there, and with my treasures bowl, I can keep my secret where, and hint of riches new and old.
Oh. So, a treasure chest full of stuff. Now, we were looking at it, it's got gold in it, coins, rubies and stuff like that. Gold is up huge compared to where it was when he first hid said chest.
Fenn's motivation for hiding the treasure was to give hope to those knocked down by the recession, and to inspire them to explore the wild.
I found a beautiful little Romanesque treasure chest. And I started filling it up with, with gold coins and gold nuggets and about 280 rubies. There are two salon sapphires, there are eight emeralds, a bunch of diamonds, but mostly gold. I don't know what it's worth, and I don't even want to think about that. You're not gonna be disappointed if you find that treasure chest.
No, no, you're not gonna be disappointed. Some estimated, you know, around a million dollars or so, but somebody finally has found said gold. Now, four people have died searching for it. We were like, that's, that's crazy. Like, shouldn't he be charged with involuntary manslaughter or something? You put something out there. There wasn't even any evidence that there was anything there. But a lot of people, and I mean, a lot of people, looked for it.
Ten years later, the treasure's been found, and I think 500,000 people have searched in the Rocky Mountains looking for it.
Yeah. That's a lot, 500,000 people. But somebody has found it.
Well, I don't know the man, I've never met him. But I know it is a man, and that's, that's about all I know from him.
Somebody from the East Coast has found it. That's all anybody knows. The name is, well, it's been, as you do sometimes with the lottery, being hid for certain reasons. But somebody found it. I wonder what that, I mean, you're going out. Wouldn't it be weird if all these people who follow the poem, if some dude and his kids on a walk, and they look down, like, that's kind of weird. Next thing you know, hey, look what we found. You guys tried so hard. And this, this, we got it. So what do you think of this? Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Sucks. Million bucks supposedly. I don't know how that works. Who you report that to? How does that even go about being divvied out? Can you, it's yours, right? It's finder's keepers, you have to post it somewhere for 30 days? And I don't know how it works. But supposedly, somebody's found it. 323-538-2423, @ChadBensonShow is your Twitter. You could tweet at us, you can text the program as well. If you haven't heard, Minnesota's decided, Minneapolis in particular, they don't need police. They've tried everything, and nothing's ever worked.
We have looked at ways to reform this department. We do not believe it is possible. Uh, we have met resistance at every turn when we have attempted reforms. And what we need to do is to form a new public safety approach.
So, they're gonna try a new public safety approach, but they've decided that it's, it's over, it's done with. They're going to defund the police. And this is picking up steam everywhere. I don't know what that looks like. I don't know how you do it. I don't know what it looks like at the end. Because a lot of times, people are reactionary, and they've got the, this, this great thought process of, of doing something. Right? But they don't have what they really want to do. They just want to eliminate this or do that. Behind it, there's something else. It's like, for me, and my, the things that I love to do, I love my lizards. And I've worked with lizards a long time. And I always tell everybody, it's like, man, those lizards are awesome and stuff. I'd love to get a lizard like that. I mean, have you thought about it? Cause this little itty-bitty, you know, 10-inch lizard that you're looking to buy, is gonna eventually be five to seven feet long, and it's gonna be 60 pounds, and it's gonna want to eat rabbits, and it's gonna take up, people don't have the thought process. They just, they see something, and it's reactionary. And absolutely, you should think about it. We should debate it, we should talk about how we move forward with it. We should want reform that works for everybody, including the police officers. But it's not just Minneapolis that's looking at this.
Mayor Bill de Blasio announcing a wave of reforms, including pulling funds from the nation's largest police force.
That we will be moving funding from the NYPD to youth initiatives and social services.
Justice, white!
The acting head of the Department of Homeland Security scoffed at cutbacks, saying, "More money is needed for training."
It's an absurd assertion. If you're concerned about needing to reform, uh, different police departments or law enforcement agency, you don't do that by slashing budgets.
Just outside the White House, at what is now known as Black Lives Matter Plaza, protesters adding, "Defund the police."
Well, but what, what's the alternative? That's the question. And I'd love to hear from people. What's the alternative if you defund the police? If you get rid of the police force, what do you think's going to be replacing it? Is it nothing? Is it, hey, you know what? It's a, it's the honor system? Or is it activist groups? I mean, how does that work? And how do you enforce laws? Or, or is that all gonna be changed? I think it's all fair questions. All of those are fair questions. I understand what we should be doing. And at the same time, in the knee-jerk reaction world of, well, we're just gonna defund the police, and you don't have a plan behind it, that's not good either. 323-538-2423, @ChadBensonShow is your Twitter. Raycon, best earbuds around. I've got mine, you should get yours. Father's Day's not too far away, now is your chance. Get your dad the best earbuds around, Raycon. Normally, you'd spend well over 150, 200 bucks on a pair of earbuds this good. Guess what? Well under 100 bucks. Well under 100 bucks, and you're gonna save 15%. You get six hours of talk time with the E25. The best model yet. Seamless Bluetooth pairing, more bass, better design, and the fit. It's noise isolating, comfortable and amazing. The quality, the look, the sound, it gets no better. Raycon has done it again. Get yours now, save big. Go to BuyRaycon.com/chad. BuyRaycon.com/chad. Save 15% right there. BuyRaycon.com/chad. Chad Benson Show.
I, you, he, she, it. Lucy is a girl.
Point of personal privilege, please do not use gendered language to address everyone.
Shut up, boo.
Ain't nobody got time for that.
This is the Chad Benson Show.
Kurt Thomas became the first American man to win a gymnastics world championship in 1978, when he won the first of his seven world championship medals. Outside of competition, Thomas starred in the 1985 movie Jim Corder, and worked as a commentator and gymnastics coach. The 64-year-old died last Friday, almost two weeks after suffering a stroke. In competition, Thomas was known for his innovations, especially on the pommel horse. He won an NCAA team championship at Indiana State, the one major title that eluded him, an Olympic medal. His best chance in 1980 scuttled by the US boycott.
Yeah, boycott. Remember that? Remember those boycotting things? It's the boycott, they boycott, we boycott, lots of boycotting going on. Jim Corder, that's all you had to say. You had me at Jim Corder. Now I'm gonna have to go home and watch it. And if you've never seen it, it's the worst, greatest movie of all time. It's the worst, greatest movie of all time. It's like, oh, I gotta save this, this, this lady that's in a castle. Thank God there's a pommel horse. Some uneven bars. So that's cool. You guys want to fight me? Get on the rings. It's on. Jim Corder. Jim Corder.
A U.S. Labor Department official testifying this past week, at least $26 billion will have been wasted, going mostly to fraudsters instead of the millions of Americans in need. Security experts say most of the fraud appears to be criminals using stolen data to make claims under someone else's identity.
Oh, no. How can this happen? Because that's what happens. That's what happens. When there's so much money given out, when there's so much handed out, people will find an opportunity and a way to deal with it by taking. And even though they're looking at it, the chance of them of, of finding it is slim to none. It's slim to none. They're not going to chase anybody down. And if you got a $600 check, even though you shouldn't, or a $1,000 check, every two weeks, you're going to probably keep it. It is, it is what it is. Sounds horrible. But thieves are always out there trying to do what? Finding the best way to get money in the least harmful potential to them. And if they can do this, they will. So, criminals are out there. They don't need to be in the streets right now. They don't. As long as you have, if you have a computer and some hacking abilities and/or some understanding of certain things, the opportunity in the world of criminality is limitless. 323-538-2423. At Chad Benson Show is your Twitter. What will happen today? Will there be more protests? What will Trump do?
The National Guard flooding the Capitol in the wake of protests. A senior U.S. official telling ABC News, during a heated West Wing conversation Monday, the president demanded 10,000 troops on American streets. The Secretary of Defense, the Chairman of the Joint Chiefs, and Attorney General William Barr pushed back. Army Secretary Ryan McCarthy telling reporters, quote, "We came right up to the edge of bringing active troops here."
What are you thinking? My goodness me. Active troops on our streets? Sorry, not into that. Not, I mean, I don't, the protest, the beauty of our country is we have those protests. They're pretty peaceful. You didn't like it? I get that. We don't need active troops. Now, if it became a riot, if it became something you couldn't handle, understandable. Right? If it got to the point where it was insane, the White House was under attack, the city was burning to the point where it was, it looked like the San, the Great Chicago or San Francisco Fire, the London Fire, and it was just chaos and madness, we weren't there. That's just insane. They're pushing back. They're looking at this thing and they're saying to themselves, uh-oh, this looks ugly for us at this moment in time. Lock and app it in five months. But the reality is, it has not been a good week or so for Trump and I don't think he's making it better on himself. 323-538-2423. At Chad Benson Show is your Twitter. It's the Chad Benson Show.
Independent thoughts, independent life. This is Chad Benson.
Hooray for the cracks that have finally emerged in the blue wall of silence. Hail the police chiefs from across the country who knelt and marched with the protesters in Miami-Dade County and New York City and Santa Cruz, California and Flint, Michigan and lots of places. Houston Police Chief Art Acevedo even said he was outraged at Americans who don't see a problem. Wasn't that long ago, police never even admitted they did anything wrong.
Bill Maher right there. That was true. I mean, there's, there's a blue wall of silence, as he calls it. And that is very real. Us versus them. Right now, the them, being the police officers, are watching everything get flipped upside down. Last night, Minneapolis, they decided they were going to defund the police. It is gaining steam. Mayor Garcetti of LA pulled $150 million of their funding and decided to put it in other things. You're going to see that happen in New York and several other places across the country as the "defund the police" movement continues to grow. Don't know what it looks like because you have to have something to replace it. Reaction, let's get rid of the police. And then you do, without a plan behind it, your other reaction is, wow, there's a lot of stuff going on and nobody seems to be able to do anything.
Forever, we've been talking about bad cops, you know, bad apples. And then the vast majority of cops, good cops. But the real new rule is, you can't anymore get away with, this is a bad cop and any cops who aren't actually committing the crime are good. The ones who watch and do crowd control for atrocities, they're not good either. That has to be the new standard.
And I've talked to several cops and asked them, have you seen things that you didn't like? And several of them, yes, you know, pulled up, seen things, got into it with another officer. Brandon Tatum, who works here with us, told me, like, his first year, second year when he was a cop, he said, "I pulled up and there was a officer that was over the top. A senior officer pulled up and took him out, grabbed him by the neck and absolutely throttled." We need more of that. All of us have asked ourselves, you'd be lying if you didn't say you did. What would I have done in that situation of those other three officers while Derek Chauvin had his knee on George Floyd's necks? What would you have done? What would you have done? We'd all like to say we'd go over and do something about it. We'd all like to say that. Because I think we would. But it's a weird world. It is a weird world. And everybody says a lot, right? But when push comes to shove, do they act? And we need the people that will act in the right way at the right time. There needs to be changing in policing. Policing needs to become more modern. The tools are there, the tools are available, but we've got to be better at it. And those tools include the vetting process.
It's a dangerous job, yeah. But I think we lose our battle with police misconduct before a bad cop hits the streets because there's not enough vetting about who becomes a cop in the first place. That guy is who we have to weed out. Instead of LAPD making the psych eval the last step in joining the force, make it the first. So, meatheads with a chip on their shoulder aren't given the license to perform urban executions.
Think about being a police officer and the power that you're given. It's, it's a pretty big power. It's a pretty big power. And you're giving a lot of leeway in the way that you can handle certain situations because the job that you're doing is dangerous. But the vetting process psychologically needs to come first. And tell you guys a story. Who's, who likes a little story time? So, I had a person I knew. All they wanted to do was be a cop. She'd never been a cop. Ever been a cop. Ever, 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 ever been a cop. Right? He shouldn't be Paul Blart. Good guy. Just the mental side of it was ill-prepared for anything. So, we did all the physical stuff, did all that stuff, and then it came down to the question side. So, you have to give several people as people that the law enforcement can call and discuss this person, who this person is. I was one of the people. I was honest. He wasn't racist. He was ill-prepared to be a police officer. Wasn't a bad human being, quite the opposite. He was a sweet, nice guy. But I wouldn't want him to get my back because he was terrified of everything. I wouldn't want him to get my back because the reality is, I couldn't trust him. And it's the kind of thing where I just knew if push came to shove, he, he just didn't have it in him. So, they called me. And I said, well, you know, what do you know about said person? And for 30 minutes, I just said, I wouldn't let him get anywhere near there. Said, I love the guy and I don't want anything to happen to the person he's working with or anybody in the street because he's, he's scared and he's, you know? There's some people that, you know, there are people out there that can handle it so much better. And there are other people out there that with a little practice, maybe they're, maybe they're timid, but they're not intimidated. He was intimidated and timid, and that's not a recipe for success. So, I spoke to the hiring sergeant or whatever for about a half an hour. And they're like, thank you for being honest. And I said, well, I don't know of people. But I found out later on that his family also said the same thing. Again, good guy. Wasn't a racist, wasn't evil, wasn't bad, just didn't have it in him. And the vetting process is real. And we always talk about teachers, right? You get what you pay for. If only we paid teachers like this or that. Well, look at the police. You're talking about, could you imagine today if we said, hey, you go, we've been looking at your scores here and your scores for the teachers and the kids isn't improving, it's going to hell in a handbasket and these kids are basically illiterate, so we're going to take your money away? We're going to put it elsewhere. We're going to give it to tutors. People will be apoplectic. We need some change. Don't get me wrong. And the conversation needs to happen. Is this the right way of doing it? I don't know. I don't think so.
Tough guys have to do tough things. Right now, it's easy to spot the toughest police officers. They're the ones telling their fellow cops, you got to stop this [BLEEP]. A crack has been made in the blue wall of silence. Please, let it break down even further.
And I think there's a lot more of them out there than people realize. The difference is, everything the cop does now that is deemed bad or looks bad is automatically evil. Anything a cop does that's good, you won't hear about because the talking point isn't there. And at the end of the day, as we know with media and many other things, it's just about as much talking point and what's going to get clicks and liked than it is anything else. 323-538-2423. At Chad Benson Show is your Twitter. You could tweet at us, you could text the program as well. All of that going on. More and more cities are opening up today, including the likes of New York City, which is going to start to open up. Some states are still having issues with things like a rise in the number of people who are in the hospitals coronavirus, a rise in the number of cases. And when you look at cases, this is what I tell people. When you look at it, you have to look at it several different ways. Remember, 90-plus, 99% of people who are going to get this are going to survive this. A good majority of them, well into the 90s, will have very little complications. 80% will never know they even had it. So, they may not even be getting tested. So, just because maybe 500 people test positive or 1,000 people, look at the bed space when it comes to the hospitals in your area. So, maybe you had 1,000 people that tested positive, but you also tested 10,000 people. So, the rate is about 1 in 10, so about 10%. But the hospital beds kind of stayed the same. So, that's what you have to look at. But coronavirus is still out there and it's still affecting everybody. And I have a feeling we're going to see a spike because of the protests that have gone on. Rightly so. The beauty of our country, we have that, that thing, right? That whole constitution where we have the right to freely assemble, we have free speech. It's the beauty of this, to assemble, to go out, to march, to protest. We have that. We also live in a world of coronavirus, which has caused states to shut down, the economy to collapse globally, and people being told when they can and can't go to work and what they can and can't do. And then that kind of went out the window and now I bet we see a massive spike. And what happens in those states and cities, do they shut down again? 323-538-2423. At Chad Benson Show. Twitter, tweet at us. Gabby. Gabby, 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 who wants to save you money. G-A-B-I dot com slash Benson. Takes about two minutes. Takes the entire pain. Gabby takes all the pain out of shopping for insurance by giving you apples-to-apples comparison of your current coverage with 40 of the top insurers. So, you got your homeowners and car insurance. How about this? Let's see quotes for the exact same coverage you currently have. Maybe they'll save you money, maybe they won't. You'll be able to sleep at night knowing you've got the best deal. Or maybe you're like, wow, average Gabby customer, 825 bucks, that's what they save. Saved me well over 1,000. My homeowners insurance was spot on. My car insurance was through the roof. They're never going to sell your info. It's absolutely free. Take advantage of it now. Takes two minutes. Go to Gabby dot com slash Benson. That's G-A-B-I dot com slash Benson. Gabby dot com slash Benson.
Set Chad straight. Text the show. That's 323-538-C-H-A-D. Someone has to do it. Might as well be you. The Chad Benson Show.
House and Senate Democrats are unveiling a sweeping package of police reforms in response to the death of George Floyd and other troubling encounters between African-Americans and the police. The Justice in Policing Act of 2020 would in part include mandatory racial and implicit bias training programs, demilitarize police, ban chokeholds, and create a national police misconduct registry. It's expected to face challenges by the law enforcement community and is still unclear how many Republicans would support the measure.
Yeah. It's interesting. Eight minutes and 42 seconds, the Democrats took a knee today. It was interesting to watch. It was tough for some of them, a little bit older. It was like, wow. So, everybody, like, the defunding of police, I understand we're not not going to have cops. Maybe we have less cops, pay them more, also have people that work with inside the police department that have nothing to do with what the cops should be doing, which is enforcing and looking for real criminals, not showing up every time for everything 24/7. Because they've become also, as we talk about police and how we deal with this, they've also become the de facto everything. They're psychologists, they got to show up and deal with all kinds of things that really is ridiculous that they don't need to be doing. The defunding police doesn't mean no police. Some people are going to take it that way. And there are some people out there would like to have that. But the reality is, we can't have that. That doesn't work that way. It's not going to be the Wild West. It's not going to be Robocop. We're going to come up with a few robots and stick them out there and the rest of it's just going to be, hey, you, you kind of, you're on the honor system. If you think you've done something wrong, pay your fine and go. It's not going to work that way. But there's going to be change and there's got to be change. There absolutely must be change for it to work. There's got to be real change. There's got to be serious conversations. So, they'll put forward theirs, the Senate will look at it and go, and it'll die and, you know, the police across the country, because are there bad cops? Of course. It's bad everything. There's bad, there's bad pilots. There's bad surgeons. There's just bad stuff. People start good sometimes at their job. It's just the reality of it. And some of them get into the job for the wrong reason. They get into it for money or they get into for, it's, it's bad, a lot of things. The difference between a surgeon, a pilot, or police is, their bad days go much different than you being a bad CPA, bad fry cook, a bad, you know, construction guy. I mean, their difference is big. The conversation needs to be had, has to be real. And to throw everything out would be stupid. It just needs to be done in such a way when we have the conversation about where, what's the ultimate goal? Is the ultimate goal less police but better policing? Fantastic. Is the ultimate goal to take some of that money and put it in programs that are going to help in some of the inner city that are struggling, especially with the relationship between the officers and, and law enforcement and the people in the city? Fantastic. Is it to CYA everybody? So, when a cop does make a, a, a situation where he or she shows up and they do what they do, it's because that's what needed to be do, it's because that's what needed to be done? But to get there, it's gonna take time. But to throw everything out and say, "We just want this," and that we're gonna fire everybody and start all over again, you're also gonna lose the trust of many of these men and women who are good, and are good at their job. And then trying to find new people, that's gonna be tough. Especially when you're not only putting your life at risk, you're putting your livelihood at risk. Meaning, you could pay forever, and ever, and ever. And I'm not talking about you going to jail, I'm talking about many of the other things that come associated with being a police officer nowadays. 323-538-2423, @ChadBensonShow, Twitter. It's Chad Benson Show.
The Chad Benson Show.
This is Chad Benson.
Jacob Frye, we have a yes or no question for you. Yes or no, will you commit to defunding Minneapolis Police Department? We don't want no more police. Is that clear? We don't want people with guns tooting around in our community, shooting us down. You have an answer? It is a yes or a no. It is a yes or a no. Will you defund the Minneapolis Police Department?
That was Jacob Frye and his confrontation with the crowd. The angry mob, pissed off. Here's the Minneapolis mayor. Minneapolis mayor, they want to defund the police department. Mayor, it's a yes or no question. Are you going to defund the police office and the department itself, and get rid of it? That's what they're asking. He's surrounded by a group of protesters, and even though uber-progressive, even though to the left of the left, he stood his ground.
Be quiet, y'all. It's important that we hear this, because if y'all don't know, he's up for reelection next year. And if he says no, guess what we gonna do next year?
Not support the full abolition.
All right? Get [bleep] out! Jacob, go home! Go home, Jacob, go home!
Shame, 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 shame.
Shame. He said, "No, I do not support the full abolition of the police force. Are you guys insane? Let me ask you, community organizer, what's your goal? To get rid of the police force? Okay, so we're gonna fire everybody. What's the plan? Do you remember last summer, right? The big craziness last summer? Kids in cages, the, "Let's defund the Border Patrol. Let's get rid of it altogether." Okay, let's do that. What's that look like to you? Just curious. So we have a border, nobody's protecting the border, because you don't want the military on the border. So nobody's protecting the border, we've got people just coming and going as they please, essentially, we have no country. You've not decided what you're gonna put over there, but I'm just curious. Every time, the knee-jerk reaction comes that we need to get rid of this, rather than saying, "Hey, we need to rework it, we need to figure out, we need to figure out how the system that is broken, how the system has failed, people of color in the past, how we can fix this system, how we can bridge the gap, how we can have a better understanding and a better working police force." Nope, it's, "Let's get rid of it. Let's get rid of this, let's get rid of that. Let's just go, we're done, can't do it, sorry, it's broken, we're getting rid of it." Okay, question, what does it look like in your world? What does it look like? Who is policing? Are there any laws? I was reading a good article, John Legend, he's like, "No, it's not gonna be like The Purge or The Wild West," right? Like, we're not gonna have the [imitates sound of a machine running] and then everybody goes in at 8 o'clock. Like those old 80s movies, remember when the 80s was all gritty and nasty, and Charles Bronson was out there? Death Wish movies, having to police the streets because there's some places cops wouldn't go? No, it's not gonna be like that. But if you don't have, "Hey, guys, I got an idea. The system's not working, what we need to do is figure out how we get the system to work. How do we take this money and we put it in programs that are gonna help the youth and the communities that are struggling, at the same time, help retrain our officers in a way that we think would be more tech-savvy, more forward-thinking, safer environment for them, as well as the opportunity to police in a way that keeps the streets safe without overpolicing. How do we do that? Instead, it's like, "No, let's just get rid of it." So how do you plan to fix it? Are you just gonna ask everybody, "Hey, don't do anything stupid, it's the honor system, if you think you've done something wrong, pay your fine and be on your way?" Well, that's not very nice to say. I'm just saying, it's very much a fair question. So last night, Minneapolis did decide that they were gonna defund the police. I don't know what that looks like. Are you going to fire everybody and rehire them under a different training? Are you going to, what are you going to do? Because when I've heard them all interviewed, the ones that are talking, they don't have an answer. Their answer is, "This is the answer." No, that's partially the answer. That's the partial answer. That's not the whole answer. So what do we do? I think it's a fair question, it's a question that should be asked, I think it's a question that needs to be asked, and I think we need to start talking about moving forward in this country, doing what we can to start bridging the gap and having conversations with individuals and as a group, without being angry at one another, without being full of accusations, being able to listen, and most importantly, not taking things personally. Well, Chad, some people deserve to be angry. Yes, they do. But when you want to find a solution to a problem, coming at it with accusations and anger is only gonna get people defensive, and nobody's gonna want to, then what? Cooperate. We don't want that. We don't want that. 323-538-2423, @ChadBensonShow is your Twitter. You can tweet at us and text the program as well. Chad Wolf, Acting Secretary, Homeland Security, on defunding the police.
So there's all kinds of talk about reform. One of the ideas that's being mentioned on the left is to defund the police, restructure, start over with police departments. Does that make any sense to you?
No, it doesn't. It's an absurd assertion, and I don't understand it.
Here's the reality. I get the thought of figuring out how, like, I don't understand, I don't know what it's like to live in a community where you feel like the policing's come down on you, the system has failed you, and in many cases, it's failed you big time. I don't know what any of that's like. But I do know this, defunding something without something to replace it can often go just as bad as anything else. So how do we get from point A to point B?
So if you are concerned about the racial injustice, Chris, that you talked about, if you're concerned about needing to reform different police departments or law enforcement agencies, you wanna make sure that you're giving them the right training, you're giving them the right oversight and the right leadership to do that, so they can continue to protect the countries that they, or the cities that they serve. You don't do that by slashing budgets. It makes no sense to me, I think it's a very political statement to make, but it does not protect our communities at the end of the day.
And that's what we want, protecting the communities. How do we get there? You gotta change culture, you've gotta bring people in that have an understanding. You need to start taking some of the stuff that the police have been doing off their hands, policing in different ways, being more modern in the way that we police, is also something I think needs to be done. But defunding, just for the sake of it, because you're angry and pissed, that, in many cases, as we all know, when you try to do something with a knee-jerk reaction, oftentimes, what you get behind it is worse than what you've left. And we can't and don't want that. 323-538-2423, @ChadBensonShow is your Twitter. You can tweet at us, you can text the program as well. The NFL also is trying to figure out where they go and what they do from you. Roger Goodell came out on Friday and apologized. Apologized in a way that I think surprised a lot of people.
We, the National Football League, condemn racism and the systematic oppression of black people. We, the National Football League, admit we were wrong for not listening to NFL players earlier, and encourage all to speak out and peacefully protest.
They were wrong. They were wrong. And that's, that's big, right? But the question is, is what's the next step? Because the, the reality is, there was a huge struggle when the protests started with Colin Kaepernick, as they spread throughout the NFL, and ratings and revenue took a little bit of a hit. But they know now, this is it. They've got to do something. They've got to do something. What is that something? And the owners have to make a decision on what they're going to do as we move forward.
This is truly the inflection point as far as how the National Football League is really going to proceed forward, and really what their stance is going to be. Obviously, everyone's making statements right now, right? Everyone's professing that now, you know, their eyes have been open and their ears are open, and everyone is now willing to go ahead and listen finally to what the message really is about, and really what the cause is about. And now, as I've said numerous times, it's about moving onward now towards action. Well, that being said, if you wanna back that up, the owners haven't really made a statement, they haven't really made a statement individually, and they haven't made a statement collectively about where they stand on this entire process. So they're kinda a little bit, they're, not a little bit, they are significantly behind the eight ball, because many people have come out and really already go ahead and express how they feel about this and what they want to try to necessarily accomplish going forward, but they haven't.
Yeah, Louis Riddick right there. What are they gonna do? What are owners gonna do? Because some owners have been like Jerry Jones. You will not take a knee when it comes to being a cowboy. Other owners have been quiet, some owners have been a little bit more vocal, some owners have said some stupid things. They're all over the board. They think green first, but when 80% of your league is made up of African-Americans who feel the injustice is not only real, it's in front of us in a way that we've never had seen, and they've also seen a player like Colin Kaepernick, like him or not, be essentially blackballed from the league, what now? What now? And that's the question that they have to answer coming up. And I think there's gonna be a lot of protests, and I think there's gonna be a lot of owners who are gonna be begrudgingly okay with it, and some that'll be absolutely fine with it, and other owners, like Jerry Jones, who might take the stand of, "We're gonna do other things for the community, but we're not gonna kneel for the anthem." And we'll see what happens. If somebody kneels, because he's always threatening, you kneel, you'll play on another team the next week. 323-538-2423, @ChadBensonShow is your Twitter. You can tweet, love hearing from you, text the program as well. What does defunding the police mean to you? How does that look? Being honest with yourself, not the chaos and craziness. Can you just be honest with yourself? Because a lot of people think it means, well, it's gonna be, you know, people running around, and it's gonna be just chaos, and it's The Purge. It's not that. What does it look like? How do we police better? That's a fair question. 323-538-2423, @ChadBensonShow, Twitter. Roughgreens dot com slash Chad, you'll want that. $14.95 for a 14-day jumpstart. My dog, Doodle, is on Rough Greens. He is a new dog. He is years younger, he is healthier than he's been, and we've tried everything. We got Doodle, our dog, he ended up having, being a little bit older than we thought when we adopted him, also had fatty tumors on his hips that made his life miserable. We tried everything, and then we tried Rough Greens. We just sprinkle it on his food, it's not dog food, and lo and behold, we've got a new dog, and he loves the taste of it, and we love what it's done for him. 25 all-natural vitamins and minerals, 20 digestive enzymes, 15 powerful strains of probiotics, omega oils, 3, 6, and 9. It is awesome. It's the best thing you can do for your dog, it's the best thing I've done for my little dog, Doodle. They can't do it for themselves, now's your chance to take a hold of this. 14-day jumpstart, $14.95. That's all it costs. Get yours today, go to roughgreens dot com slash Chad, or call 833-MYDOG88, that's R-U-F-F greens dot com slash Chad, or call 833-MYDOG88. Rough Greens, we make any pet food better. Chad Benson Show.
Check out our Chad Benson Show Facebook page, where you can hang out or hang your grievances out to dry. This is Chad Benson.
This was a lot of hard work. Everyone who stayed home, everyone who socially distanced, everyone who put on those face coverings, you got us to this day, and it's a day to celebrate hundreds of thousands, New Yorkers coming back to work today, just the beginning of the restart.
Bill de Blasio, god, he sounds useless. New York's reopening, other states have been reopened for a while, they're seeing some spikes. Some states that reopened and everybody said it's gonna go, "Oh, it's gonna go to hell in a handbasket," it's the exact opposite. It continued to see a decline, and how do you judge it? Especially now, because we've had hundreds of thousands and over the entire process, well into the millions of people that have protested, going on 10, 15, 10, 12, 13 days, and you know you're gonna see spikes in the number of people that test positive coronavirus. It has not gone anywhere, it is still here. So what happens? That's, that's an interesting thing. I don't know what's gonna take place. Because you expect it, as you reopen, and allow people to go back out into the world, that there was going to be some growth rate in the number of people who tested positive. But it was never about getting to zero. Well, New Zealand got to zero. New Zealand got to zero because there's like eight people in New Zealand, and they shut everything down, and they didn't allow people in. It was never about getting to zero. It's always been about controlling the outbreak and positioning us and our hospitals that they have all of the things that they need, that should it really get to the point where a lot of people thought it was gonna get, that they wouldn't be under pressure, and we wouldn't see people literally in the streets. We over-prepared? Luckily, it never got to that point. Doesn't mean it handled perfect everywhere. Trump has got some issues that he didn't deal with, but Cuomo's got a ton of issues, especially when it comes to the nursing homes. Bill de Blasio's not handled this thing well at all. California's seeing a spike, even though they were hardcoreed first. But the question is, where do we go from here? Well, we go from here by seeing what takes place over the coming weeks. The spikes because of people out in the streets protesting, couple that with the spikes of people getting back out there and living their lives, the reality is, this is going to be with us for a while, while they search for a vaccine and some sort of therapeutic treatment. 323-538-2423, @ChadBensonShow is your Twitter. On top of that, Democrats today introducing new legislation when it comes to policing and reforms in policing.
We are taking the first of many steps, many necessary
Yeah, that's as good as I, "First of many steps."
We are taking the first of many steps, many necessary steps, to respond to this national pain with bold action.
Chuck Schumer right there. What does it look like? Well, the defunding the police is ridiculous, but Minneapolis did it last night. What does that mean? Nobody really knows, because like everything else, there's nothing on the back end. People will get into situations that sound like it's a great idea, not really planning out the entire thing, only to find out that it wasn't the best idea. Reform is needed? Absolutely. There's a way of going about doing it, and taking away the funding probably isn't the answer. 323-538-2423, @ChadBensonShow is your Twitter. Have a great rest of your Monday. We'll do it again tomorrow, as always. Night, night, Jack.
This is the Chad Benson Show. This is the Chad Benson Show.